The lights, the lights of state can you see shining out in liberty on each day throughout our land. Shine upon us as we stand free.
Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas.
The lights, the lights of state can you see shining out in liberty on each day throughout our land. Shine upon us as we stand free.
Kentucky, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, Montana, Nebraska, Nevada, New Hampshire, New Jersey, Mexico, New York.
The lights, the lights of state can you see shining out in liberty on each day throughout our land. Shine upon us as we stand free.
North Carolina, North Dakota, Ohio, Oklahoma, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Carolina, South Dakota, Tennessee, Texas, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Washington, South Virginia, Wisconsin, Iowa.
The lights of freedom shine on our land, on our land from sea to sea, from hand to hand. And where I look up, oh, I can see, oh, I can see the lights of freedom shine out for me. The lights of freedom shine out for me. The lights of freedom.
How about another round of applause for Beckham Elementary? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call to order the meeting of the AIC Board of Trustees at 7:07 PM. First item for the evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. Leading us in the pledge tonight will be our 23-year military veteran, Mr. Peter Barron.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And at this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Good evening. Welcome. What a great night to come out. And thank you all for joining us this evening at this beautiful center for Fielder Church. And thank you to Fielder Church for allowing us to use this. But what a great night to come out at this special board meeting where we get to honor four individual families that were so important to AISD and will continue to perpetually endorse them tonight. So with that, first off, let's thank the student groups that were performing. Hope everyone enjoyed the welcome as you were walking in. Our student groups are performing all over this town all the time, and they're such a value add. So let me take a minute and thank our groups. The Lamar and Sam Houston High School Drum Line, the Arlington High School Drill Team, as you saw them dancing, the Bowie High School Drill Team and cheerleaders that were out tonight, the Martin High School String Quartet over on the side, you just saw the Beckham Elementary performance tonight, and our Student Leadership Advisory Board, which are students that are assigned to each one of the board members. So we have student connections. They were out here greeting people as they entered. Let's take a minute and thank all the student groups. At this time, I'd also like to recognize some special guests that are in the audience with us this evening. First, let's start with a large group that they invited every single member of all the organizations to come out. We have numerous Rotarians in here tonight. So at this time, any of our Rotarians here on the inside, please ask you to stand and say thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you to all of our Rotary Clubs in Arlington. I'd also like to recognize our elected officials that made it out this evening. If you're an elected official, would you please stand? Mayor Clark, Constable Woodruff, Councilmember Parker, and our former elected official, Ms. Nash. Thank you so much for being with us this evening tonight. Also saw some former namesakes in the crowd. So if any of our former namesakes are direct immediate family members, would you please stand? Saw the Adams, our most recent namesake. Sorry we didn't hold such a big event when we named y'all. We were new. We were figuring out how to do it. So I saw another namesake. And I must recognize a former superintendent, Dr. Byrne. Thank you, Dr. Byrne, for being out this evening. Also saw some, we know some former board members are in the audience tonight. So any of our former school board members that have served on the AISD Board of Trustees, would you please stand? Thank you all. You all understand what a great honor this is for us to be able to name schools after individuals. So thank you to all our special guests and thank you to all the friends and family, supporters, fans of the folks we're honoring tonight. Thank you all for coming out. We know what a special evening it is. Tonight, we get the honor to honor six individuals who have made, I don't even know if significance or right word, contributions to the district as we celebrate the transformation of the district through new and repurposed facilities. It's a great, great honor. It's going to be a fun night. We're going to talk a lot, but it's going to be fun, things we're going to talk about. So at this time, I'd like to start off how we got to this stage and how we're getting to naming these schools and these facilities. So at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Kavassos to have him talk about the past and the future overarching view of the district.
Thank you, President Hogg. And I would like to take a moment, since it is a night of celebration, that we, a special recognition to the School Board of the Year that's up here for all their hard work and volunteer efforts. Thank you all so much. So as President Hogg said, tonight we honor the many traditions of the Arlington Independent School District. With our new facilities, with our repurposed facilities, we know that at the end, it's about people and people that have made a difference in the lives of students every single day. And every organization that transforms the lives of students, they do so because they have people that care about the students that they serve. Tonight, you're going to hear about individuals who went well beyond their scope. These individuals affected the entire district, the entire community, and in many cases, the entire state. And so today, this allows us to continue the tradition of AISD, continue to serve students exceptionally well. When we think of our 64,000 students in our district that are engaged every single day in trying to realize their dreams, the dreams that our staff, teachers in particular, have instilled in them or helped them focus in on. Our task today is to help them realize those dreams. So when you think of students who are 14 years old for the first time in Arlington that are able to take college-level courses because their dreams are to have an associate's degree when they graduate from high school. When you think of students who are entering kindergarten next year, who will be participating in a fine arts dual-language academy where they will learn two languages and be proficient in those two languages and a third language and be able to participate in all the arts. We think of STEM labs in every elementary school to help our science and math instruction. The exposure that students are receiving today is truly amazing. And much of that has to do with the fact that this board committed to a strategic plan with us, with the community of Arlington, committed to a transformation like none other. And we are here tonight because we also have the great fortune of having a bond issue that we're implementing thanks to the generous support of our voters. $663 million to transform our school district. So you're starting to see tangible examples of the vision that was set to transform this district to be a premier school district. And those tangible examples every single day. So we reflect tonight on the journey of this educational process, the lives of thousands and thousands of students in Arlington that are affected by the work that collectively, because even if you don't work for the school system, you contribute. You contribute your time, or your energy, or your support to students. So we celebrate those that have helped us along the way because we know that our primary purpose, and these individuals demonstrate that, our primary purpose is to serve students. We know that the facilities, the schools, they belong to the students. The adults have the fortune of leading them and managing them, but they're a tool for the success of students. And so tonight, you're going to see a demonstration of that over and over and over. So we thank you so much for joining us.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Very well said. And we haven't forgotten, we wanted to wait till right after that. We have to recognize, we have lots of visions, lots of plans, but nothing matters if we don't have the right teachers and the right leaders on our campuses. And so at this time, we'd like to make a special recognition for all these facilities that are being named. It mean nothing without the right staff that are in there. So at this time, we'd like to take a special recognition and every single teacher, principal, AISD staff member, would you please stand so we can specially recognize you? Thank you for all the hard work and the dedication you give to our students every single day. It's, we can't say enough, and we're thankful for your work. Now let's get to the fun part of why you're all here this night. So at that, we'll start with our first facility naming for the evening. And at this time, I'd be more than willing to take a motion. Dr. Raish?
I think I can do something like that, President Hogg. Thank you. In preparation of my motion, I'd like to discuss Dr. Diane Patrick. Diane Patrick has dedicated literally her entire adult life to education and the enhancement of education to ensure all Texas students would be provided a quality education. Now, if you didn't get that, I used the term "education" three times. Little redundant, but it cannot be overstated enough when you're talking about Diane Patrick. I think anyone in here, when you hear the name Diane Patrick, you associate that with education. Before I initially became elected, I knew Diane. But more so, I knew of her outstanding reputation that she had when it came to standing up for the children, standing up for education in general. I knew of this reputation because of the expounding of teachers, administrators, and community leaders. And I'll have to tell you, for myself, it was truly awe-inspiring and really exciting for me at the time to know that we had such an amazing education advocate right here in our own backyard in Arlington, Texas. I don't have enough time to share any specifics with you, but I can tell you that during the legislative session, Diane was in constant communication with us. And this was during her countless efforts and quite frankly, the battle that she did in defense of education while in Austin. And for that, Diane, we are so very, very much appreciative. Thank you very much. Now, that most recent role is one that we're all familiar with. But I don't know if you know the complete scale of Diane's commitment to education and her qualifications related to it. Diane was a school teacher. She taught in Waco, she taught in Richardson and in Birdville, and she was also an administrator for a school associated with a private hospital. When she and Ned became parents, she didn't stop her level involvement at that point with children. In fact, she's a former PTA president at Duff Elementary and Bailey Junior High. And as many of you know, that's a vast commitment and continuing dedication to enhancing our children's lives. But Diane didn't stop there. Diane was elected to this board, the AISD Board of Trustees, for four terms. That's 12 years of service. Four of those years, she was president of this board. Now, for most people, that in itself would be an amazing lifelong legacy. But for Diane, there was still plenty, plenty in her to give. And as such, she has served on the Arlington Education Foundation Board for 19 years. So folks, there's a whole lot here for one single person to do in their lifetime, but that's not all. There's still more to the story of Diane Patrick. But we have to be official. Before we progress further, Mr. Hogg, I would like to make a motion. Are you ready? Okay. That our Timber Oaks Elementary School property be named the Diane Patrick Elementary School.
Very nicely stated, Dr. Raish. And I know a principal out there at Timber Oaks is excited. So at this time, I would be more than willing to entertain a second because Diane, we do have to make it official. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. It's a pleasure and an honor to second the motion, and I have a few things to say. Diane Patrick taught in the UT Arlington College of Education for 13 years. She has also taught graduate-level education classes at TCU and at Dallas Baptist University. She was elected to one six-year term on the State Board of Education. Diane served four terms representing District 94 in the Texas House of Representatives. She was a champion for public education. Through her years of public service, she has influenced the education of millions of students across Texas. But I want to talk about that first term. I worked on Diane's campaign. We put up so many signs. They weren't the plasticized ones we have now. They were more like poster board that had to be folded in half and stapled over a wire hanger. We tore up a lot of staplers that election. During the campaign season, there are a number of high-profile political forums where the candidates answer questions from a moderator or from the crowd. At the Republican Candidates Forum in 2006, as the challenger, Diane was faced with a hostile, sometimes mean and hateful crowd. She held her head high, spoke her mind, and came through the gauntlet with class and grace. As soon as that forum was over, Diane came to me and said, "How did I do?" I gave her a hug and I whispered, "You did great, Diane." In the 2006 Republican primary, Diane Patrick was challenging the long-term incumbent representative Kent Grusendorf. She beat him, taking 58% of the vote. She made Grusendorf's support for school vouchers and her opposition to them the key to her upset victory. She went on to win the general election and served four terms as the state representative from District 94. The Texas Legislature is still trying to pass a voucher bill. Diane always put the children of Texas first, ahead of partisan politics. For that, I will be forever grateful. You did great, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Very kind words and very true words about Ms. Patrick over there. At this time, I have a motion by Dr. Raish and a second by Mr. Barron. So at this moment, let's go ahead and vote. We have seven trustees voting, seven trustees voting in affirmative. Dr. Patrick, we have officially named a school after you at this time. Would you please make your way up to the stage while we show this short video? Hold on. Well, Diane, we would like to tell you, make sure you clear your schedule. March 30th, we'd like you to come to a board meeting where we will be making a recommendation to name a school after Diane Patrick. A facility, a facility after Diane. We'd ask you, it's a recommendation. We'd ask you to be prepared to speak for five minutes.
What if the board votes against?
I don't think you need to worry about that.
We have it, so...
I cannot, this is not happening. Oh my gosh. Come here. Are you in on this? Oh, I want to thank you all so much. This is me so much. Oh my gosh.
What a fun way to tell someone you better be at a meeting on March 30th. So at this time, let me give it to Dr. Kavassos so we can talk about what this school entails and hear from some of our architects. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'd like to invite Corrigan Architect representatives, Associate Principal Susan Smith and Senior Associate Ryan Connell to the stage. And while they make their way up, the Diane Patrick Elementary School located on Timber Oaks is part of our school district's overall strategy to relieve East Arlington overcrowding. And so if you're familiar with Arlington ISD and our distribution of population, there was some overcrowding in East Arlington, and this board took the step, a bold step, to fund this elementary out of fund balance. So this is prior to bond election, to relieve the overcrowding in East Arlington. And this is one piece of that puzzle. So in relieving that overcrowding, we have now the Diane Patrick Elementary. And in that elementary, you'll hear in just a minute from our architects, the state of the art, the type of environment that our students will be in to meet their dreams.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. On behalf of Corrigan, Ryan and I are thrilled to be here. We're so excited to be part of this celebration. This is a really exciting day, and we're happy to be a part of it and share with you a little information about the new Diane Patrick Elementary School. Diane Patrick Elementary School is a school designed for 900 students from grades pre-K through sixth grade. The school is scheduled to open for the fall of 2015 and is currently under construction under the watchful eye of the construction manager, Balfour Beatty Construction. The state-of-the-art facility is designed for collaboration in large and small group learning to support 21st century skills and improve student knowledge and retention. Each grade level is organized in a classroom pod with classrooms surrounding an open, shared collaborative space, becoming an extension of each classroom. At the end of the collaboration space is also included a teacher collaboration workroom to support grade-level team working together for a common goal. A centralized library space locates and provides an open, flexible learning space for students of different group sizes. Throughout the corridors and the classroom walls, education pods are graphics designed to support environmental, science, technology, education, and math curriculum. 21st century furnishings provide flexibility and mobility, supporting an interactive environment and allowing the furniture to define and redefine space dependent upon the activity throughout the day. A wireless network throughout the facility supports the increased flexibility in the learning environments. STEM labs are located on the second floor and provide large, flexible learning, science learning areas to support the curriculum for science, technology, engineering, and math. A performance platform in the cafeteria will provide performance space supporting the music and strings music rooms. And outdoor classrooms provide outdoor courtyards and learning spaces, giving students areas to explore, experiment, and grow in a safe and secure outdoor environment. With that, on behalf of Corrigan, we are pleased and excited to present Ms. Diane Patrick with an artist's rendering of the new Diane Patrick Elementary School.
Thank you to our partners at Corrigan. What a great, great facility. And Diane, I think you better get your hard hat on because I know your principal, and he'll take you out there and show you that property very soon to see that. So at this time, we'd like to hear from our newest namesake, a few words from the namesake for Diane Patrick Elementary, Dr. Diane Patrick. Diane, a few words.
Well, board members, what I want to say is why have a staid board meeting when you can have fun like this? I mean, this...
I mean, this is amazing. You all know that this is just the most exciting moment of my life. And I'm so glad that you recognized how much and how significant it would be to have an elementary school where children get their early start in learning. Named after me is just very, very special, and I think everyone in the audience realizes, but we had no idea what building they were going to name. So I'm just so grateful and really, really appreciate it. Everyone can see how excited that I am, but I have to tell you, I never dreamed that this would happen. But I want to say that I believe that the real reason that we are here this evening is to celebrate the lasting legacy of Arlington Independent School District. We are here to honor all that has been and will be accomplished through the courageous leadership shown by school board members and the superintendent. My heartfelt thanks goes to School Board President Bowie Hogg, Vice President Jamie Solins, Secretary Dr. Aaron Reich, Assistant Secretary John Hibbs, and the other board members Gloria Pena, Peter Barron, and Keisha Mays, not only for this honor, but for the commitment that you all have shown to so unselfishly serve our community. And we appreciate your families so much as well for supporting this kind of commitment, because believe me, I know what that is. I want to recognize and thank Arlington ISD Superintendent Dr. Marcelo Kavasos for his outstanding leadership. We're very fortunate. I don't know if everyone in this room realizes just how fortunate we are to have a team of eight. You're looking at it. The team of eight is united behind their motto: inspired learners, effective leadership, and an engaged community. The board's belief in this motto led to our community solidly backing the recent bond proposition calling for new facilities to carry out the legacy in new ways. And we came here tonight to learn the names of these new visionary facilities. I also would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the other namesakes, Laura and Jimmy Jones, Sandy McNutt, and Debbie and Eddie Peach. Having known all of these educators for many years, it is indeed very humbling to be in the company of such great educational leaders. Thank you for all that you have done. When I was a little girl growing up in Longview in the Piney Woods in deep east Texas, I subjected my two little sisters to playing school on a regular basis. So tonight, I'd like to recognize my youngest sister, Dr. Jane Ella Stanton, who is here this evening and stand up. She's a former teacher and counselor here in Arlington ISD. Interestingly enough, our widowed mother was a school secretary in a Longview Elementary School, and never did she dream that an elementary school would be named for her daughter. My history with the Arlington School District goes back to 1973, when Ned and I moved here for the outstanding reputation of the schools and to raise our family. I became active when our children Craig and Claire were at Duff Elementary School. And did I mention that our children's greatest achievement was to be parents of our seven grandchildren? They range in age from newborn to 6th grade. My husband Ned is here tonight, and I would like to publicly thank him for moving us here where he established his dental practice and for supporting my community involvement over the past 42 years. Thank you, Ned. During the 12 years I served on the Arlington School Board, we opened 15 new schools. We had the distinct pleasure of bestowing this namesake honor to other school namesakes, but never did I dream that one day I would be one of them. We have several former school board members here tonight, Barbara Nash, Tony Pampa, and my colleagues Anne Morris and Jim Ash, and perhaps others I haven't seen, but I want to thank you for your service because, again, you gave mightily to this school district unselfishly for many years. Arlington ISD embraces collaboration with our community, the city of Arlington, Tarrant County, Tarrant Community College, UT Arlington, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, AISD administrators, teachers, and parents. The students in our community are the beneficiaries of this great team. I thank all of you for being such an important part of that team. Yes, as you can tell, I'm very proud of the Arlington Independent School District, where the slogan is "AISD: More Than a Remarkable Education." To be associated with a slogan like that is indeed an honor. What makes this special evening a dream come true is because it's about our Arlington community, who will join together to provide more than a remarkable education at Diane Patrick Elementary School by creating inspired learners, effective leadership, and an engaged community. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Diane Patrick Elementary's got a nice ring to it. Now you've got to start thinking of mascots, all kinds of things there, Dr. Patrick. Let's get the building open and ready. We're ready. Next, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Diane, for the kind words. Very, very nice and very well deserved. Once again, congratulations. Next, we'll move to our second facility of the evening, and I will call, entertain a motion, and I will call on Ms. Mays.
In a world that surely needs public education heroes, the AISD is blessed with an army of them. In many cases, these heroes work here, they meet here, and they even get married here. Such is the case of Jimmy and Laura Jones. Laura Jones served in many capacities before retiring as the principal of her much-beloved James Martin High School. We remember her cheering on her warriors to join in and find their calling as mathletes, athletics, artists, scientists, linguistics. Likewise, Jimmy Jones is a shining example of AISD homegrown leaders. He served in many capacities before taking the helm of Lamar High School. Jimmy Jones is a special kind of dedicated, loyal, and steadfast leader. Without question, he was a great encourager of his faculty. He insisted that all kids matter and all disciplines matter. And frequently, he emphasized the essential balance of academics, athletics, and the arts. Jimmy and Laura have emerged in the community as true ambassadors of the AISD and public education. Jimmy works tirelessly with the North Arlington Rotary and always lends a hand to make sure the AISD continues in the quest of education excellence. Laura answers the call to serve on our extraordinary Arlington Education Foundation Board and other AISD committees. I have had the sheer honor of sitting on several of those committees with both of them and personally experienced their passion and their leadership that they have for this community. Together, they've worked tirelessly to help educate the community about the importance of the district's recent bond. As we know, with the bond program, the community took bold steps to build new facilities, update others, and to repurpose some to meet student needs. One of them was to establish new academies to expand art and language learning opportunities. Tonight, I move that the new academy emerging at the site of Rockmore Elementary be named the Jimmy and Laura Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language to honor two of the most dynamic principles of the AISD.
Ms. Mays, I think that's a really good motion. I'll agree with that. At this time, we'll entertain a second, and Ms. Solins, I think you have that.
Why, yes, I do, President Hogg. Thank you. When I asked the community to describe the Joneses, the same words emerge over and over again: authentic, passionate, tireless, forward-thinking champions. Laura Jones, with the hustle of the Energizer Bunny and innovation suitable for a TED Talk, is always laser-focused on one thing: excellence. She is that someone who examines standards then leads to raise them, constantly challenging herself and those around her. It could be exhausting, but somehow she energizes everyone around her. Martin High School was certainly a beneficiary of her remarkable drive, passion, and forward-thinking. It seems that part of her will always remain at Martin High School, but she has expanded her reach to the entire district in retirement, making sure that every single student has the resource they need to achieve greatness. Now, while Laura was busy with her career at Martin, the ultimate version of AISD, house divided, unfolded as Jimmy Jones led the proud Lamar High School. There is so much to say about Jimmy Jones. If we cover it all, we would have to plan to stay here all night. Simply put, Jimmy was a masterful steward of the Lamar Way and was treated everyone as family, encouraging every student, teacher, clerk, custodian, bus driver, security guard, everyone. Jimmy Jones is a true servant leader, and one of the things I first noticed about Jimmy Jones and one that I will never forget is his compassionate instructional leadership for special education students. And if you ever happen to find yourself at a Lamar High School pep rally, you'll see why. Like Laura, Jimmy has moved on to be a champion for all students in the entire district. Their combined service to the AISD is nothing short of remarkable. Ms. Mays, I wholeheartedly second your motion.
Perfectly said, Ms. Solins. I agree with that second. We have a motion and a second to name the Jones Academy for Fine Arts and Dual Language at this time. If board members would please vote. We have seven trustees present, seven trustees voting in the affirmative for the Jimmy and Laura Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language. They've already made it to the stage. At this time, would you please watch a short video?
Laura and Jimmy, we are here tonight to announce a very special occasion that we are going to have on March 30th at Fielder Churches Metro Center. Okay?
We're already married. We don't need to... We don't spend our time together. We're trying to work this out.
So that evening, we are going to hold, the board is going to hold, a special call meeting to take care of naming some facilities here in the district.
Oh, my gosh.
It really is overwhelming.
You know, we both, I guess, spent our entire career with the AISD, and I think that's a little bit of a rarity, but still, this is... Oh, whoopsie.
The one time we can get these leaders short for words is telling them on that night right there. At this time, I'd call on Dr. Kavasos to talk about this school and introduce our architects. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'd like to invite Stantec representatives, Principal Architect Jonathan Aldis to the stage. So the Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language is truly one of our most innovative instructional programs that we've designed. Students will be experiencing arts in all areas: music, dance, theater, and art. The students will also be learning two languages: English and Spanish. And in second grade, they'll be learning a third language: Mandarin Chinese. This design and this school, the Jones Academy for Fine Arts and Dual Language, is something that is not replicated anywhere in Texas. And so the students participating there will have an experience like none other, and it'll transform not only language education, but when you combine the arts with language development and those two, what I call cognitive accelerants, for students, it'll change their lives. And so the Jones Academy for Fine Arts and Dual Language will be that innovative program in AISD and begin serving students in the fall, kindergarten cohort in the fall. So I'm sure that Jimmy and Laura will help us as we welcome kindergarten students. I know they were high school, but they have to start somewhere, right? So will help us welcome the kindergarten cohort to the new Jones Academy of Dual Language and Fine Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos, and Board of Trustees. On behalf of Stantec, joined by my much taller compatriot here, Brett Holsley, we thank you for letting us be a part of this. This is a momentous event that we don't see very often, quite honestly, and it says something about the two of you as well. So we're excited to be here. Quick overview of the campus. As you all know, the 2014 bond had a tremendous emphasis on fine arts and education, and world-class was terminology that was thrown out time and time again. And I'm proud to say, on behalf of Stantec, we're excited to be involved with the Jimmy and Laura Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, which I've been practicing all day to get that out. It's a lot of letters going to be on the canopy, because I truly believe this building, which is, as we all know, Rockmore Elementary School right now, when complete in August of 2016, will truly be a testimony to the board and community's vision to fine arts and world-class education and a truly integrated approach to educating children, which you've spent your careers doing here. The building itself, the first cohort of students will enter the facility in August of this year, and then the work will continue until August of 2016, serving about 460 students. Juris general contractors are the construction managers for the project. In addition to all the things you'll hear about the other elementary schools, there are, of course, the two STEM science labs. We are also adding extended learning spaces. So in addition to just traditional classroom spaces, there are spaces where students can learn in different sizes, different configurations, supported by 21st century technology and 24th century furniture throughout. But the major distinction at the Rockmore, I'm sorry, the Jimmy and Laura campus will be that this is a truly immersion-based campus in fine arts. So in addition to the traditional music and strings rooms that are at the traditional Arlington ISD elementary schools, this campus will feature a little theater, small theater for students, dance rooms, strings, general music, as we said, art, and then also piano labs. So you have students at the K through 4 level specializing in arts for all and choosing a specialty in their 5th and 6th grade year, and this campus supports all of that. So the space is about performance, collaboration, and creativity. And on behalf of Stantec Architecture, I want to thank you for letting us be involved with this, and we'd like to present you with the rendering of the soon-to-come new campus.
Thank you to our partners at Stantec in this very innovative elementary, and it does have a long name, but I think Jones Academy has a really nice ring to it. So at this time, we'd like to hear from the newest members of the Jones Academy, Jimmy and Laura Jones. Would you please say a few words?
I guess first I should say that as a retiree, this would usually not be my attire on a Monday night, but woo-hoo, I got to pull out one of my red and black warrior dresses, so it's a good night. And this name is a mouthful. We may just go with Jones Academy and hope no one confuses it with Academy Sports. It's an honor to share the night with family, friends, and longtime colleagues, and especially this all-star lineup of namesakes. As you know, there are a lot of Joneses, so I'm very grateful to those who not only took the time to nominate me and Jimmy, but also to the Board of Trustees and Superintendent Cavassos for believing in us to be worthy. I'm overwhelmed at this particular facility because this has been a high interest of mine to meld the arts with the academics. Everyone has heroes. As an educator, I would not be who I am if it were not for the influence of these mentors. From the original Bowie High School, Ron Tyner. It was the 80s, and Ron was ahead of the times. He practiced shared decision-making with the faculty before it was the norm. He embraced innovative practices and was okay if not all proved to be successes. He was approachable and treated the faculty like family. Doug Shouse. "Adversity is just another opportunity to serve," a mantra that became well-ingrained at Martin High School. Steve Jacoby. "Hire very talented people, then delegate. Trust them to do their jobs well." Judy Duke. Judy set the gold standard for being classy. Bob Wyndham. "Look for humor. The job can be tough, and as Reader's Digest tells us, laughter is the best medicine." Also, when the district tells you to take a mulligan, don't dwell on it. Embrace the do-over as an opportunity to create a better outcome. Sandy McNutt. "Be kind." Sandy's heart is Texas-sized, and thankfully, there were many Sandy-like teachers and administrators in the Martin network of schools. It made my job as principal so much easier. And James Adams. Not only a dear friend and confidant, but also one of the wisest decision-makers I know. Even tough decisions can be delivered with compassion, and for goodness sakes, don't look foolish. Read the rulebook first. Dr. MacByrne for believing in me and for telling the board she's got lead in her britches she can handle it. Bob Wager. "Play like your hair is on fire." John Hibbs. "Make it a great day." Karen Koontz. Friend, administrative assistant. Martin High School would not run without her, as we know, the old saying has a lot of truth to it: the principal secretary really runs the school. Dr. Cavassos, who models being a reflective listener, which is still an ongoing lesson for me because I do like to talk. And most importantly, from Jimmy Jones, fierce loyalty. I know our family and friends, and definitely his Lamar Vikings would agree that Jimmy's mixtape includes "You've got a friend, stand by me," as well as a chorus of "I did it Running a large high school is a team effort, so I want to recognize these outstanding administrators who served with me during my tenure as principal. Mike Ward. Marlene Roddy. Dwayne Tignor. Maury Pickler. Tommy Scott. Tim Collins. Tanya Redvine. Judy Stringham. Scott Johnston. Kelly Hastings. Juan Verreal. Luann Kennedy. And lastly, a lesson from my parents, Hank and Hazel Zorns. I know they would be very excited and proud for me and Jimmy, but they would also be the first to say that you are here today because you stood shoulder to shoulder with many outstanding educators. So to the wonderful faculty and staff members from my 20 years at Martin High School, please know that in my mind's eye, your names are etched on the letters of Laura on the Jimmy Jones and Laura Dual Language and Fine Arts Academy. Thank you.
She always makes me follow her so that when I mess up, y'all remember her. I do want to say thank you to the board members tonight and Dr. Cavassos, and to anyone who took the time to write a letter and to nominate Laura and I and all the supporters that it took for this to happen. I'm not one for speeches. Anybody who's worked with me much knows that. The only speeches I ever wrote were graduation speeches, and that was simply so I wouldn't forget some of the kids' names. So I do have a few notes. I do have some family here tonight, I'm sure, some that are not. I was pushed into education by my great uncle, H.O. Harris. He was an educator all of his life, and he finished his career as the superintendent in Denton, and his sister was my grandmother, Eva Sparkman, and my mother and daddy, Carl and Margie. Bless their hearts. I know they're proud of me. Anyway, I have some brothers and sisters, I think, out there somewhere, since I've got three of each. I've got some aunts and uncles and some cousins here, and I have my AISD family, a large part of that, which was Lamar High School. And I have the support of my Arlington North Rotary Club here tonight, and I appreciate you changing your meeting to be here for this. I had a career of 36 years between Hutchison Junior High, Sambuston High School, Bowie High School, and Lamar High School, and I was exposed to so many teachers and other personnel over this time. I could never begin to list the names of all the teachers that have affected my life and my career in that time. I did spend 24 years at Lamar as an assistant principal and worked with some people that it's just hard to describe the knowledge and the commitment that came out of Dee Didrikson and Stockton, Bubba Hillman, Julie Porter, Sharon Mayer, Kathy Stanfield, councilors like Linda Reeves, Carolyn Hammond. I had the privilege of coaching for the district for a while, and when you work both sides of that issue, you really see some dedicated people, and I had the privilege of working with some of them alongside of them and observing some of them to a degree. There are no better people in this district than people like Bill Keith, Icy Little, Mike Nelson, Tim Mace, and Eddie Peach. In my career at Lamar as an assistant principal, watching Eddie work amazed me. And I think what amazed me even more is that when I was smart enough to bring Debbie up as a teacher, that he kept doing the same job even though she was there. And she kind of kept watching both of us, which was okay, too. But thank you, Eddie, for your dedication. I had the privilege of working with a lot of central office personnel over the years and a lot of other principals, too. There aren't many principals in this district or any other district in this state who can say that they made national news their first year of being a principal, not once, but And I want to publicly thank our assistant superintendent at that time, Mr. Jerry McCullough, for helping me through that. My first principal was Don Carson at Hutchison, and as a new teacher, a new coach, I couldn't have asked for anybody any better. And when I was a new assistant principal, I could not have had better mentorship than well, the English provided. And I know Laura has already mentioned James Adams, but if James had charged me for every time I called him and asked for advice, he'd be a rich man. And I've always appreciated his wisdom and his dedication. And I'm going to close by saying, beloved, my life is right there.
We like that. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Adams will tell you how hard he expects you to volunteer at your school. Set the example. We appreciate that right there. So congratulations, Jones Academy. It truly is going to be one of the most innovative buildings in this district. We're excited about that. We'll next move to our third facility for the evening, and I would be more than willing to entertain a motion. I think, Ms. Penya, you're up.
Yes. Sandy McNutt is a passionate educator who served the AISD from 1978 through 2007 as a teacher at Ditto Elementary, assistant principal at Starrett and Mary Moore Elementarys, and principal at Wood Elementary. She enriched the lives of many through her work and dedication in the schools and community. Bob Wyndham, who was principal at Ditto while she was assistant principal, excuse me, while she was a teacher at the time, said, "One of the hardest jobs I have in 45 years of working in schools was explaining to parents that not all of their children could be in Mrs. McNutt's class." While there are many more stories that have been shared with us in regards to the impact Sandy has had on them, there was a particular student in fourth grade class she taught that shared with me his experience and how she changed his life at Ditto Elementary. He was not a kid who fit into the so-called normal mold, and he felt ridiculed for just not being like the rest of the kids because he didn't express himself as they did. She took the time to listen to him, encouraged him, and allowed him to have the dignity that he needed. Today, he's a great attorney who certainly expresses himself well, and I'll let you guess who that is. She mentored staff and administrators throughout the AISD. She's probably helped develop a great many of the teachers and staff we have today. There was a particular teacher she mentored at Starrett Elementary who shared her experience as a new teacher. As the assistant principal, Sandy came into her classroom and noted she was not totally moved into her classroom and asked her why. The young teacher had taken the place of the teacher who had gone on maternity leave, and she didn't feel she should disturb the belongings of that teacher. Sandy's interaction with that "her" caused her to realize that she was the teacher and helped her to take ownership of that class. She shared that it was the day that she finally knew she was a teacher. There are many, many more stories that reflect the significant impact Sandy has had on our students and staff while she continues to impact our students today. As such, I move to name the new elementary located on the Workman Junior High site, Sandy McNutt Elementary.
Very nicely stated, Ms. Penya. At this time, I'd entertain a second, and Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, President Hogg. It gives me great pleasure to second this nomination. Sandy McNutt is a dear friend to all of us in Arlington. She has blessed our district for over 30 years of positively impacting the lives of thousands, not just students, faculty, or even staff, but the families and the entirety of the AISD community. Every time that I hear a song that's entitled "Thank You," as it's performed, the first person that has always come to mind is Sandy McNutt. The songwriter must have known Sandy as the words describe you so well. The lyrics go like this: "Thank you for giving to the Lord, for I am alive..." Should I say, "We are..." "All of our lives have been changed." "Thank you for giving to the Lord. We're so glad you gave." Each and every child in Sandy's eyes is God's special creation. I know that there will be one day, a line that will be extending for miles of people seeking out to show their great appreciation for you. For the times that you attended birthday parties, athletic events, ballet, different recitals, science fairs, and on and on. See, has always been there for her students, for her faculty and her staff, celebrating the good times and in supporting in the times of hardship and strife. Sandy McNutt, you're truly a difference-maker. Sandy, the naming of this school is an honor that our community has for you, and it will be a lasting memory of the greatness of you in the AISD. But even greater, I know that one day, that the ultimate praise is when you hear, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Sandy McNutt, we all thank you. We are all so glad you gave. President Hogg, it gives me great pleasure in seconding this nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Wonderful second. At this time, I have a motion by Ms. Penya and a second by Mr. Hibbs to name the Workman Junior High School Site Elementary to now be officially called the Sandy McNutt Elementary. At this time, please vote. Seven trustees voting, seven trustees voting in the affirmative. As she wakes, makes her way up here, congratulations, we officially have a Sandy McNutt Elementary School at this time. Please watch a short video.
Ms. Sandy McNutt, we are here to invite you to a very special evening at the Metro Center on March 30th. We're going to have a special call board meeting that night to discuss facility naming.
And we'd like to present you with some invitations so you can give them to your friends and family. She will join us on that day with all your friends and family, March 30th, at the Metro Center. Don't forget the Metro Center. So here are your invitations.
And you're not limited to that. We expect at least a thousand.
Be prepared with about five minutes of saying something. Okay?
Oh, my God.
With that crying.
We can give you a hug now.
And we hope you can make it.
I can't believe this. And the people that I've loved for so many years.
The shocked look on these namesake faces when you show up with a camera, a balloon, and some invitations. It's amazing what you get out of that. This time, we'd like to call on Dr. Kavasos and our partners at Corrigan to discuss the Sandy McNutt Elementary. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'll invite Corrigan representative, associate principal Susan Smith, and senior associate Ryan Connell to the stage. The Sandy McNutt Elementary School, located on the Workman Junior High School property, will is that final piece of that puzzle to relieve East Arlington overcrowding. And as Sandy knows, as a lifetime educator, that it's important for students to have the environment to learn, in an environment that's appropriately sized. And so the McNutt Elementary School will help relieve East Arlington overcrowding, but beyond that, will give us the capacity to continue to welcome students for years to come.
Thank you. The Sandy McNutt Elementary School, we're happy to give you a little more information about the new facility. It's designed to serve 900 students from pre-K through sixth grade. The school is scheduled to open for the fall of 2016. Construction for the new facility is scheduled to begin this summer. The school is designed to support 21st century skills that includes collaboration and flexible environments throughout the facility. Each grade organized in classroom pods includes open flexible collaboration space and teacher collaboration workrooms to provide team rooms for grade level faculty. Library spaces centrally located provide open flexible learning spaces for students of different group sizes. And a large learning tiered stair in the main entrance area provides a unique learning space for students and will serve as a meeting, presentation, and performance space for the facility. Flexible furnishings in an interactive environment allow the furniture to define and redefine space, and wireless networks support the flexibility of the learning environments. STEM labs as well are incorporated into this facility for science, technology, engineering, and math. And performance spaces support the music and strings room. A centralized outdoor courtyard provides tiered seating, creating an outdoor classroom in a safe and secure outdoor space. At this time, we are pleased to present Ms. Sandy McNutt with an artist's rendering of the new Sandy McNutt Elementary School.
Ms. McNutt, we'd love to hear a few words and congratulations.
I was waiting to follow directions from you guys. First off, I'm pretty doggone overwhelmed. Don't start my counting yet. I told my sister to tell me in five minutes, but I want to say one thing before you start the timer. Today was a pretty tough day for me at school. Some of my friends that I teach with at Trinity Valley would tell you that I had a lot of meltdowns today. I just started booing for no reason. I just started crying and couldn't quite get myself together. The kids in the cafeteria, I think, were a little bit stunned, and as my friend Bob Wyndham would say, "I can sling snot better than anybody he knows." I slung a lot of it today. But I asked for a little bit of advice today, and somebody said, "Whatever you do, don't forget to introduce your family." And my family's pretty doggone big, and I'm going to talk about them in a second, but I think they take up the first six rows here and love you guys very, very much, very, very much. You are definitely the wind beneath my wings. But to President Bowie Hogg, to Dr. Kavasos, to an amazing selfless school board, and these phenomenal people whom I get to share this evening with, Jimmy and Laura Jones, Eddie and Debbie Peach, and Diane Patrick, here's what I say to that. Holy schmoly hot diggy dog and good bravery. What an honor. As I have been contemplating nonstop this past week, what can I say in five minutes that can sum up my journey through Arlington ISD? Three thoughts kept surfacing, and my speech changed a million times over. Talked to my mom yesterday, and she said, "You don't have that speech done yet." And I said, "Well, it just kind of keeps changing on me." But I thought, how can I even begin to thank everyone that has been on this amazing ride for the past 30 years with me? How can I thank all of you for this nomination without leaving out a single person? What words can I share that could possibly sum up my thoughts in regard to this overwhelming honor? I don't think there are words that can express my insurmountable appreciation. And then one of my greatest worries, what can I wear so that I don't look like a big old toad standing up here? I'm really not sure what a big old toad looks like, but I knew I didn't want to be And here's the truth to the matter. I know you don't really give a flying flip what I wear. It would take the rest of my lifetime to thank those of you who have impacted my life, and I only have five minutes. So I can't really talk too much about Tessa and Andy. They asked me if I would please say their names out loud, but maybe when we get ready to have the dedication, I can be a little bit more specific about that. So I decided to focus on pouring a few profound words of wisdom upon you. You see, this wasn't the plan for my life. The plan that I had written for myself was much different. I was going to grow up. I was going to marry some handsome man. I was going to have two to three children, and I was going to live happily ever after. But you see, that was my plan. But God's plan was much different for my life. He paved the path for me to have a much greater impact on lives than I possibly could have imagined. I was shooting for two to three children, and look what I got. I got thousands. I got you guys. I found that being obedient to what God wants from me reaps far greater rewards than what I could have ever imagined. My friend Christie always reminded me that any good that people might see in us needs to be a reflection of God, and I hope that's what you see in my life. Jeremiah 29:11 says, "For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper you, not to harm you, and plans to give you hope in a future." When I graduated from college, I walked into Ditto Elementary, and I met a very, very young principal by the name of Bob Wyndham. He took a chance on this very naive teacher with a mouthful of braces, and he let me teach fourth grade, first grade, and second grade at Ditto Elementary. When I was 21 years old, he believed in me. When I went into administration at Staret Elementary and Mary Moore Elementary and at Wood Elementary, he believed in me. And when I retired, very young, and went to Trinity Valley, he believed in me. You have touched many lives in this room, Bob Wyndham, none of the least being mine. Arlington ISD has impacted my family, and as I said, I have one pretty doggone big family. I have shared so many stories along the way of my mom and dad, who celebrated their 64th wedding anniversary last week. And I have shared stories about my sister Judy, my sister Pam, my sister Diane, my sister Jackie, my sister Jeanette, and my one and only brother Sean. None of which did I ever elaborate on the stories. I always tell people not to say anything bad about a McNutt, as the chances are, there will be one within five feet of your conversation. Through the course of their lives and that of my amazing nieces and nephews, my family has been a part of many campuses and left a profound impact on the McNuts. Our successes come from having walked through the doors of Short, Dunn, Gunn, Young, Bowie, Beckham, Arlington High School, The Newcomers Center, Little, Martin High School, Ditto, Staret, Mary Moore, and Wood Elementary. That's a slew. Sharon Witt, one of the greatest counselors and amazing friends that I've ever known, she's dancing in heaven right now. She's dancing alongside my brother-in-law, James, and my niece, Jessica. Sharon would always say, "Be careful of what you say, Sandy, as what runs through your head often times comes straight out of your mouth." I would remind Sharon that it always went through my heart first, too. So from my head to my heart and out of my mouth, I thank you precious forever friends. God has been good to me. He gave me far more than I could have ever imagined. He gave me you. Tennyson has a quote that says, "I am a part of all I have met." If that is true, then I have each one of you firmly secured forever in my heart. To my family, my AISD family, my Trinity Valley family, my church, my forever friends, to this selfless school board, to my students that are here and their phenomenal parents I have met along the way, my heart is full because of you. Thank you beyond measure for letting me be a part of your lives. You are loved immeasurably by me. Thank you.
I agree. This whole audience is out here going, "I wish, I wish I'd had Sandy McNutt as my principal when I was in school." Well deserved, Sandy McNutt. We're very proud of you, and we're very proud to have a Sandy McNutt Elementary with a truly honorable namesake. Thank you so much, Sandy. At this time, we'll move to our last facility of the evening. At this time, do I have a motion? Ms. Solins?
Why, yes, President Hogg, you do. So Eddie and Debbie Peach, their names resonate greatness. They are two of the most influential cornerstones on which this proud district is built, and most certainly two of the greatest heroes that ever walked the hallways of Lamar High In a ladies-first fashion, I will start with Debbie, because I know for sure that is what Eddie Peach would want. You see, when we had the opportunity to invite the Peaches to join us this evening, Eddie immediately shared how proud he is of his wife, Debbie, a classroom teacher, the backbone of education. Debbie never took the easy path, and she made sure her students didn't either. Her legendary summer reading program sent many incoming freshmen scrambling to study A Tale of Two Cities, since there was a longstanding rumor that there would be a test waiting for them when school started. Her freshman Vikings arrived wide-eyed, but they left full of respect for someone that made learning fun and brought out the best in them, a best they didn't even know existed. It is safe to say that Debbie Peach is a hero among her fellow English teachers. Teaching is a balancing act rooted in both science and art. She engaged students with just the right seriousness of purpose and playfulness, an approach that's more easily described than carried out. In the end, she developed hordes of lifelong learners. Now, if you've lived in Arlington, surely you know the name Eddie Peach. You didn't even have to live in Arlington to know the name Eddie Peach. If you're a sports fan, you certainly know him. Hired by Sam J. Curley and James Martin, Eddie opened Lamar High School and built one of the most remarkable athletic programs in the state. And that's not just my opinion. After all, in a state that loves football, how many coaches have chalked up 300 wins? Eddie is one of the winningest coaches in Texas football history. Former Arlington Bowie coach Kenny Perry summed up Eddie's Viking spirit of determination when he remarked, "The only bad thing you can say is that on Friday nights, you are going to hate playing Eddie Peach because he really wanted to beat you. He was as fierce a competitor as anyone." Eddie and Debbie are trusted friends and advisors. They stepped into retirement slipping out of typical celebrations. They are selfless that way. I couldn't be more proud of them. For all of these reasons and many, many more, I move to name the new elementary located at Baird Farm Road, Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary.
Ms. Solins, I think they like that Baird Farm Road location right there. They know where that is. Thank you for that motion and nice words. At this time, we'll look for a second, and I'm willing to make that second right now to the Peaches. We are in Texas, so football had to come in critical at some point in here. Eddie won more games than anyone else at the highest classification in Texas in football With that, Debbie Peach won more games than anyone else at the highest classification in football in Texas, because you know you win and lose as a family together in the world of football. I don't think Eddie graded as many English papers, though, as Debbie Peach did in that same situation. Let's give a little background on Debbie and Eddie Peach. Eddie Peach began teaching and coaching career in 1965 at Carter Junior High School. He then spent the next four years at Arlington High School as a PE teacher, JV football coach, and the head baseball coach. As Ms. Solins stated, James Martin hired Eddie Peach to be the first head football coach and athletic coordinator at Lamar High School. Eddie's original love was baseball, but when Mr. Martin asked, he knew he had to take this opportunity. Mr. Martin knew exactly what he was doing, as Eddie would impact four decades of athletes, students, colleagues, and the community as a whole as the athletic director, head football coach at Lamar High School from day one. Eddie not only won a lot of football games, 309 to be exact, he led Lamar to the 5A championship game in 1990, and his teams were state semifinalists in 2000 and 2003. Debbie Peach began her teaching and coaching career at Bailey Junior High in 1973. In the late '70s, she served as a PE teacher at Rockmore Elementary School. In 1982, she became an English teacher at Shackelford Junior High School, where she taught for 15 years as one of the most enriching English teachers in our district. taught for 15 years as one of the most enriching English teachers in our district. When ninth graders moved to the high school campuses in 1997, Debbie Peach moved up to Lamar High School where she taught ninth grade English and serves as the head of the English department until she retired in 2010. Together, they have over 80 years of dedication to the AISD and yes, that calculates to over 10,000 students. Their influence extends far beyond the school environment. As a youth, I had the honor of playing youth baseball and football with their son Sean. And Eddie, even during football season, would always make his way out to our practice and games to help coach all of us, not as the Lamar coach, but as another dad. Another dad with a lot more coaching experience than most of the other dads. As a family, Eddie and Debbie instilled values of hard work, education, and servitude. Their sons are a direct reflection as Scott and Sean have both followed them into the education field. Focused on teaching first and coaching second, I say teaching first and coaching second because Eddie and Debbie have always placed that emphasis on teaching first and coaching second as they know that is how you grow a school and develop young men and women a character. That is apparent now by their son Scott, who is the athletic director and head football coach at Arlington High School. He always hires first on teaching and secondary on coaching. Don't get me wrong, they both focus on winning, but they want to win in the classroom first. In the nomination, Sean Peach had a quote that really hit home with me. Sean said, "Through the long football seasons and the uncountable late nights grading English papers, my parents always made my brother and I feel like we were the only thing that mattered." What a nice thing for a son to say. Summed up with a comment I thought was perfect about the Peaches, "Reputation and respect should come from great character and integrity and these two are worthy of their legacy." Eddie and Debbie Peach have created a legacy based around character and integrity and we are proud to perpetually continue this legacy by officially naming Peach Elementary. And that is in the form of an official second. With that, we have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by me. We had lots to talk about, the grammar and discussion with Ms. Peach down there. We have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by me at this time with the board, please We have seven trustees present, seven trustees voting in the affirmative. If Eddie and Debbie would please make their way up to the stage and please watch this short video. We're gonna need to make sure you guys are available, March 30th. We need you to be at a meeting with the Board of Trustees as on March 30th, we're making recommendations to name facilities. We'd like you to be prepared to have a five-minute speech.
Yes please.
Here's that, some invitations. We look forward to seeing you on the 30th. You've never been a loss of words, come on. At this time, let's hear a little more about Peach Elementary on Baird Farm Road. Dr. Kavassos and our architects, Perkins and Will. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you President Hogg and Will, managing principal and education planner Patrick Glenn from Perkins and Will join us on stage. The Peach Elementary School is another school that will help us in relieving some overcrowding. This school in particular on Baird Farm Road will help us in the north part of town. What's unique about this facility, and there's a lot to discuss about the uniqueness and the service to students, but this facility in particular, Peach Elementary, we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club for them to locate a Boys and Girls Club branch at the facility. Our board has made a commitment to engaging our community and when we are able to share resources and share the service to students with other partners, we're committed to doing that. So in Peach Elementary, we hope to have a Boys and Girls Club branch located in the facility so that the service to students is not only for the elementary students at Peach Elementary, but junior high students and other students in the surrounding neighborhoods. And that continues the legacy of service well beyond one elementary school.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kavassos and certainly Eddie and Debbie Peach. Thank you for giving Perkins and Will this opportunity to share in this experience of naming of the new Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary School. This is certainly quite an honor. I was asked to share some highlights of the new design, so I'll start off with the school's capacity. The new Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary School will house 900 Arlington ISD pre-K through sixth grade students. The new facility will house two pre-K classrooms, six kindergarten classrooms, 24 primary classrooms, 12 intermediate classrooms, and two special education classrooms. Balfour Beatty Construction will be our construction manager and we plan to break ground sometime this summer in late June and be open for the fall of 2016, a short 12 months later. Some of the unique features of the design include positioning the building sustainably on the site to take advantage of the north indirect daylighting as you can see on the left-hand side of the screen. The facility is planned to include two wings, a public wing and a private wing, separated by a centrally located administration tucked behind the impressive main entry overlooking the visitors' protected entry plaza. The public wing includes a new cafeteria, a Boys and Girls Club as Dr. Kavassos mentioned, and a new gymnasium. The music and strings program will be located adjacent to the stage that will open and be featured along one wall inside the new cafeteria for public events and student performances. All the academic teams will be located in the two-story private wing of the new facility supported with flexible and student, 21st century collaborative student furniture. The younger students will be located on the lower level, the older students located on the upper level. Each academic grade level will also include a dedicated and open student collaboration area that will give each student a unique learning environment to collaborate and learn from their teachers and their fellow peers. The art and STEM labs will be located on the upper level and be provided and will be provided with a shared and open and protected outdoor learning area. Last but not least, the state-of-the-art media center, having access from both the public and the private wings of the facility, will be located in the heart of the school, having views out towards the outdoor playgrounds and the outdoor student learning areas. This new media center will be impressive, interactive, fun, collaborative, and educationally supportive of 21st century learning skills. Each student will be inspired and proud to attend the new Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary School. On behalf of Perkins and Will, I'm proud to congratulate and present Eddie and Debbie Peach with a framed artist rendering highlighting the new front entry of this future and innovative
Thank you Perkins and Will, outstanding design as we've seen the start, the early stages of this building. At this time, we'd like to hear from our two newest namesakes, Debbie and Eddie Peach. Please come on up and say a few words.
As many of you know, I'm not the cheerleader in the family. I have several of those boys. Dr. Kavassos, President Hogg, and the award-winning school board. Eddie and I are overwhelmed by this event and want to express our gratitude for such a tremendous honor. What a privilege it is to be a part of AISD's future when it has been such a major part of our past. Also, what an honor it is to be recognized with these other individuals. We have always had such great respect for each one of you. They have been big names in our district and they've given it so much of their time. I'm a witness to that because one was my boss and another one was my son's boss at one time. To be recognized with them is such a heart-touching experience. Our lives were extremely busy, teaching and coaching. We not only spent our daytime hours at school, but performances and activities were our nighttime social events, our so-called dates. We would not have had it any other way though. But Eddie and I are all about family. We finally retired in 2010 with many hours of discussion was the time. So we could spend more time with our immediate family. We wanted to be more involved in their lives. We had to give up that time. When we played football, it was always Lamar and we watched from the other side. Before I introduce them, their successes, their events, their lives, they're here, I'll introduce them in a minute, but I'd like to recognize my husband. We're about, it's about almost 43 years we've been together. He has been my rock, my best friend, and he's always supported me in everything I've Not only has he touched my life, but he has touched the lives of so many young people, early years at Arlington High, many years at Lamar High School, and now coaching our grandson Cooper and other boys in youth baseball and football. Our entire family has been a part of this wonderful city and the Arlington School District. Eddie and I would like to introduce our family. Our older son Scott, who's been with the district for 18 years, and his wife Kim, who's been in the district for 14 years, they're sitting right over here at the second row. And their children, Cooper, who is a Duff Elementary student in third grade, and his sister Campbell, who is in kindergarten at Duff Elementary. And our younger son Sean, he's been with the district 10 years, and his new bride, Brienne, who's also been in the district 10 years. I think they have about 50 or so years all put together. I know I have a couple of cousins here as well and then Kim's parents are also here, John and Ann Daniel. So we appreciate your coming tonight. I also see many of you who were our coaching family and also our school family and we appreciate your being here tonight. You have been such a big part of who we are and for that, we thank you. And I also want to thank some of my students who I saw in the entryway with the shirts they promised me years ago, "I survived Mrs. Peach's English class." I think they put something like the mythological project, but at the time, I remember distinctly their saying, "I survived your class." My life changed when I entered Blanton Elementary in 1958. I loved the school atmosphere right away and decided I could model my first grade teacher, Mrs. Smith, someday and other teachers who followed her. When I finished public school, I was ready to pursue my passion, so I attended a university down the street, not too far from here. In 1973, I was hired as a teacher by Woodrow Count's. I've been a part of AISD for 54 years, either as a student, as a teacher, or a volunteer. I have always wanted to be a teacher, nothing else. My goal has always been to motivate my students to reach beyond their grasp. I wanted them to think on their feet and in doing so, I knew I would have to use my compassion, my communication skills, flexibility, humor, intelligence, imagination, and open-mindedness. Hopefully, I provided them a positive role model. Finally, in China, peach represents happiness, longevity, good fortune, and sincerity. Happiness, Eddie and I have been so happy in this profession as coach and teacher. Longevity, we both together have spent almost a century working in AISD. Good fortune, Arlington schools have given us so many riches and honors throughout the years. And sincerity, we sincerely think, thank you, excuse me, for this opportunity to be a part of moving AISD forward in the future. Thank you so much.
You talk about someone that's completely out of his element. I did get a little fired up when I first came in up there when we saw some band members and cheerleaders. You know, I'm used to being in a gym with 2,500 screaming kids and cheerleaders cheering and Mr. D doing his thing and Mr. Musser playing our fight song. That's my life. You know, we couldn't be more thrilled, Dr. Kavassos, President Bowie-Hogg, board, than your selection. You see, Lamar High School, what makes it different from any other high school in the United States, it has a professional football team, it has a professional baseball team, it has a Six Flags, and it has a Wet n Wild and its attendant zone. And if you will go to the North Arlington community and you will ask them, what is the most important thing that goes on in North Arlington? Some will say the Cowboys, and some will say the Rangers, and some will say Six Flags, and a few might even say Wet n Wild, but the majority of North Arlington is going to tell you the most important thing that goes on in North Arlington is Lamar High School. And now, we have what can be made into the second most important thing that go on in North Arlington and that'll be Peach Elementary. Jamie and Laura, Diane and Sandy, congratulations and great job. And I'd also like to congratulate my wife, the teacher. You know, when I told Jamie, and Jamie was trying to explain all this, I said, honoring a teacher in this district is the greatest thing in the world because they are heart and soul of this district. And I said, you could not make a better choice because she taught at all three levels, she was Teacher of the Year at all three levels, and she was District Teacher of the Year. You know, when you talk about an honor, it has two parts. The honor itself and the people that are willing to step up and make the honor happen. I've been honored twice in this district, one affects the other, and both times, I had no earthly idea what was about to happen. I was on the baseball field at Arlington High School 45 years ago and I was the head baseball coach and we had just finished baseball practice. And I loved my experience at Arlington High. It was a great experience and a great school. And Mr. Curley was waiting over by the fence and soon as practice was over, he came over and he said, "Coach Workman wants to see you in the administration building." And he said, "After you get through, I want to see you in my office back here." And I thought, oh my word, what have I done? And here I am, I'm in shorts, coaching shoes without socks, a coaching jacket. I'm sweaty, I'm hot, and I'm dirty and I said, "Mr. Curley, do I have time to take a quick shower and change clothes?" And he said, "I said..." And he said, "I said Coach Workman's waiting on you at the administration building, and you need to get there." So here I go to the administration building. And I walk into the administration building, and I end up in Mr. Martin's office, who's superintendent of schools. And there's Mr. Martin, and Mr. Counts, and Coach Workman, and they're in suit and ties, and here I am, dirty and shorts with no socks and a shirt, and they commence to tell me how thrilled they are that I'm going to be the new head coach at Lamar High School, and I thought, "Are you crazy? You know, do you have any idea what you're doing?" And I was so shocked and so thrilled, but part the way through, what I understood, what a great honor, what a great honor. Because you see, if you're a high school coach in the state of Texas, it is an honor. And when you can be a high school head coach in the Arlington ISD, one of the best school districts in the whole state, it's an honor. And so, that day, I was honored. Forty years later, I was still at Lamar High School, and in that time, had so many people that made this night possible. In my first thirty-six years there, I had three principals, Sam Curly, well in English, and Jimmy Jones. And you talking about a great thirty-six years, that a head coach and a principal's relationship could not have been greater, both professionally and personally. They were all different, in a lot of ways, they were all the same in a lot of ways. But the important thing was that they were great people, their leadership skills was completely different, but they were great leaders. Academics always came first. There was never any doubt about that, but also, they wanted to have great programs in the athletics and in the fine arts. They cared about their faculty, and they cared about their kids. My coaching staff, some are here tonight. Great, great, great. They were people that were devoted and dedicated, they were people that loved to work with kids, and the greatest honor that I can say about them, they were outstanding teachers, not only on the field, but in the classroom. Love y'all. The opportunity to work with hundreds, hundreds of student athletes at Lamar High School, that you had the opportunity to coach them and work with them and be a part of their lives, and they being a part of your life. To the support groups, the faculty, the student body, the parents, the community, the butcher club. I had the greatest job there was for forty years. The second biggest honor, a week ago, last Wednesday, Debbie and I was at the baseball field out at Dunlop. We're there to watch our five-year-old granddaughter play her first coach pitch baseball game. And our granddaughter is five, her name's Campbell, our grandson's Cooper's age nine. She's the pretty one, he's handsome, they're both great students, they're both good ball players, and they're great kids. I really felt like that you needed to know that, okay? But if you haven't ever been to Dunlop, it's for Little League baseball, and there's a long, long walkway, and there's all kinds of fields on both sides, and when you play out there, everybody's playing. So you hear all this noise and everything that's going on, and people's cheering and all. But that night, after our game, we're standing there talking, and things were different, you know, it was a different sound, and you heard people saying, "That's him, that's him, that's the superintendent of schools," you know, "And look at all those people dressed up," and all, and you could hear, because they were coming our way, and I looked up and I saw, "That is the superintendent of schools, and it's Dr. Kavassos, and what in the world is he doing here?" And then after that, I saw Jamie, and I saw Kisha, and then after that, I saw Bowie, and then I saw Spence, and you know, right on down the line, and they just kept coming, you know, and we still didn't have any idea what was going on. And then they started reading what was happening, and Debbie and I were so thrilled, so thrilled, and all, and now even more so. But the important thing that I said before, when you honor someone, it's not only the honor, it's the people that will step up and honor you. And my first honor was being named the head football coach at Lamar High School, and the people that stepped up in that, Mr. Martin, superintendent of schools, Mr. Counts, associate superintendent of schools, and also became superintendent of schools, Coach Workman, athletic director, and Mr. Curly, principal. And I guarantee you, when people step up that are the leaders of your school district, and the best school district in the state of Texas, and they say, "I want you," it's special. And the other night, when our great school board that is here now, Dr. Kavassos, and all their accomplishments in this district, that you have such great respect for, and respect what they're doing and how hard they're working to make this the greatest school district there is, and you're in the best school district in the state of Texas, and those people step up and say, "We want you, Eddie and Debbie Peach."
I have to say, President Hogg, you can tell a true coach, the only one, without the script, and look at that delivery. It's incredible.
You gotta be worried about a coach going at the end, you'll start to run through a wall or whatever he wants you to do at the end when you finish on that, so. Congratulations to our newest elementary and namesakes, Peach Elementary. On behalf of the board, thank you all for joining us this evening at this special call meeting where we can make it official and let them know exactly which schools and what was going to be named after them, as we celebrate these wonderful, wonderful facilities, but more importantly, this is about celebrating those wonderful individuals, and the ones who really benefit from this are all those students that are going to be in those four elementaries, some next year, most of them in 2016, and we look forward to those students getting to know you guys as much as we've enjoyed, and all the students you've impacted in the past, ones you'll impact in the future. I also have to take a second and thank one of my colleagues, Ms. Solins, who helped coordinate and organize most of this, and all of our marketing staff, and our communications staff, and our technology department. Electronic voting, moving very far in the technology world, we're moving up here, so I thank you all for all the hard work to put on this event. It takes a lot, but it's worth it for these individuals. Our newest namesakes will remain at the front of the stage. For you to congratulate them, we would ask that you form a line to the right, so we have some chaos, I think the fire marshal will yell at us otherwise. And as we get to each school being dedicated, we will make sure everyone's notified, we will be doing ribbon cuttings and official ceremonies to kick off each school, where we can focus on what that school is and take the tours and really see how it's like. So we look forward to those schools, and with that, we are officially adjourned.